No. Bring in lunch. Good afternoon, members of the school board, and Mr. Senator Simmel and Assistant Speaker, Mr. Mullen.
She's not.
Here we go. This next part of our State of the District is going to basically address some of the changes in Senate Bill 1076 and middle and high school requirements and how they have changed. So if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and do the middle school. I'm handing out a little diagram that...
Something we can actually see.
Yes, yes ma'am. We're going to kind of go through this, and then if you've got some questions, please don't hesitate to ask me. These are basically ones that have been in place, but I'm going to kind of point out the ones that have actually made the change because of 1076. And then I'm going to turn it over to Gail Nobles, and she's going to talk about the high school world and how that has happened. At the middle school level, I'm going back in time, but again, remember, 2006 was the middle school changes and that students needed three successful courses. And that's, please, that mine, courses at the middle school level, so mathematics. And for this year, the mathematics change for course offering was a pre-algebra MJ. It used to be MJ3, now it's MJ pre-algebra. And then MJ pre-algebra advanced. And then the intensive reading, again, is for those students who have scored level one on their mathematics. Now, I have some notes in my last column, so as you can see, looking at the top, grade six, grade seven, grade eight, the year, the graduation year that they are, and then I have some notes in there. And those notes basically align themselves to specifics for that content area. So as you look at that, and I will share this with you, is that, again, I ask every year about that Algebra I and Geometry enrollment at the middle school levels, but understand that that is a requirement. We have to have an offering of high school courses at the middle school. We do Algebra I. At all four middle schools this year, it's Geometry. So those students, when they are actually accelerated to that point, they, there's a clear understanding by parents that they have to successfully complete three courses. So it could be the middle school courses, or it could be part of those high school courses for mathematics. So that's why we go through a very, very careful review. What I'm trying to get at is that if you have a student in eighth grade who actually has not doing well in Geometry I honors, then we've got to look for some interventions because are they actually going to be getting their three courses for promotion to the high school?
So what do you do? What have you done?
What have we done? We have not had this situation until just recently, as a matter of fact.
Well, you probably have seventh graders who are having this struggle in Algebra, or even eighth graders.
What we typically would do is we would pull them out and put them into a grade seven, or the pre-algebra. Yes, ma'am. Exactly. But once you are on that track of Algebra I to Geometry, what are those?
We don't have Little Arts in those schools.
No. But we do have opportunity for, you know, virtual offering. We talked about this at the principals' meeting just last week, is that if we have a child that's in Geometry I, is then a choice of going into pre-algebra, again, kind of stepping back, or maybe looking at a Florida Virtual class for maybe the informal geometry, which would maybe move at a better pace, or the regular geometry.
Is the difference between the honors and the traditional course, did you really think of that?
I lie awake thinking of the question, but I can't...
The answer is, I mean, is that, how does that...
Four or five benchmarks is the difference between Geometry I and Geometry I honors.
And now, one of the things, though, is that, having a student that, you know, I think I even called maybe Patrick, and maybe even you, Mark, and said, "Why is my kid taking so many standardized tests at the end of their thing? They're taking a final exam, they're in Geometry, they're taking the Geometry EOC, and you're having them take the eighth grade..."
Grade level F cap.
"...FCAP." And I learned very well, as I think Citrus Springs Middle School learned, that that was a triple safety net, or it was at least a double safety net for my child. But in the case there, they all succeeded, and therefore we had, of course, the wonderful idea that they improved over 10%. But that would have provided, had he, let's say, or any of his cohorts had failed Geometry, we were one district that elected to give both tests. We did not have to do that.
Correct, that is a local decision.
And that local decision, I think, would have given that safety net, in that case, to that student, because then we would have only had to have then passed the eighth grade to gotten credit.
Yeah, we also want those child, we also want those, we want to identify what of those components for the grade level eight, are there any gaps? Because down the line, you know, that might show up again in Algebra II, in another math course. So it's a kind of a three-fold kind of process that we kind of go through as far as offering that, or having our students engaged in those class tests.
So it means that you took the percentage of each of the tests, you had them put together?
No, no. He literally had to take a separate EOC for Geometry, and then a separate EOC for eighth grade.
People says I'm getting pretty over 10%.
Oh, I'm sorry, the school, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead to say that one of the reasons why the school got it incomplete was, I believe, because we exceeded 10% in learning gains.
That was supposed to be a statistical anomaly, but it's okay, we call it 30% this time. Hey, nobody throws anything.
Come on.
Next slide is the science. Those are three...
Wait, let's go back to math, because you raised that open-ended question. How many students do we have that may be in parallel with not failing jobs at a grade level? None?
None, we have not had any. Typically, what happens, Mrs. Deitchman, is between this time period, between now and December, a student's progress is closely monitored in those high school courses. If we file that that child is not doing well, then we will actually put them into that grade eight math class.
But that doesn't really meet their needs either.
Well, it's basically, again, they've basically jumped over that to get to the Algebra I honors, so that is actually the course that we're looking at.
I guess the question might be, is how often do we even do that, where we move them back?
It's not often. There are, again...
Probably more so from Algebra back to...
That one I probably could see, but Geometry...
Geometry back to...
And if you recall, I'd say probably within the last five years, we've actually really seen an increased number of students that are actually on that accelerated path for that Geometry I honors. As a matter of fact, I think you know now that all four middle schools are actually offering those courses on their campus. I have the numbers about, you know, 18 to a class in each of these.
And are you still using the Orleans Hannah?
Yes, for, now, that's for Algebra.
But that's been, in that predictor, I think you found that that's been a pretty solid predictor of determining if a student is Algebra-ready, or how Algebra-ready they are. And then that's been used as part of that multitesting to say, okay, we're going to have a conversation about then excelling them, or not excelling them.
Exactly. That is typically that part that starts that accelerated path for mathematics.
And we've been doing, I'm sorry, we've, if I recall, although this has now become part of statute in 7059, this has been, though, I know the district's expectation now, long before it was made statute, if I recall, is that not correct?
Algebra, the advanced...
That you've been offering the advanced math, or you've been...
We've been doing that for years, but we were driving to high school.
Back when our kids were in school, yes.
And he was soccer, and then he came here, he was the first one.
Oh.
Stuck with the F in my...
Phil.
Andrew Phil.
Andrew Phil.
My question, here's another question, though, and I asked this last year, and I don't know if anybody's discussed this, but Algebra I, Algebra II sequence instead of Algebra I, Geometry sequence. I know in places like Orange County, you're adopting that as their math curriculum model.
You did bring that up with me at the last board meeting, yes. And we have, we are, as you know, our instructional materials process is coming up, so typically we make those kinds of significant changes at that time. I know Brady's...
I'm asking this almost as...
Like Algebra I.
A student with Geometry, how has we explored the idea that if they're struggling with Geometry, that maybe they would be better in Algebra II, partly because Geometry is more different part of your brain, and I think part of the issue with Geometry is students really need a certain amount of neurological development in order to do Geometry, but Algebra is not in that...
Right brain, left brain.
No, it's a little different, but something like that, because I guess Geometry is sort of three-dimensional, and also in that, doing proofs and that logical thinking. I don't know, I just wondered if...
Thinking about changing the offerings from Algebra I to Geometry to Algebra II, to Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry.
Maybe always more students that is Geometry and is struggling with it, maybe instead of going out into eighth grade math, maybe they could explore Algebra II.
Mrs. Nobles and I have not had a chance to talk about that in our work, but I know you brought it up at the last meeting.
That was a hot topic at the state meeting last month.
See, I did it?
No, well, the state of Florida said, "No, no way, no go."
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they, there's some reasons for that, and part of it was the way we link data in evaluating students and promotion and learning gains. So I believe Orange, Gail, mine was Orange the only one that had that in place, and so they identified Orange, and Orange said that they will acquiesce and shift back. But again, there are studies that go both ways on that, but I think the concept you offer of, you know, could it be beneficial for one child? And I think back when Mr. Kennedy always offers himself as the distinct learner in processes for learning, and there could be those students that could be benefiting by that, but overall, the state has discouraged us from moving into that sequence.
But is it forbidden? So you couldn't offer Algebra II as an alternative to Geometry in a formative school student who was failing Geometry?
But in theory, you could, and I'm asking both of you, Mark, so you don't have to stand, but you could, I would think, in Mr. Deitchman's example, if we were going to move them out of Geometry and back into eighth grade, I guess you could put them in a virtual and then remediate them into the eighth grade, thereby accomplishing, I think, essence of both of them.
That's really what we were kind of working towards.
Yeah.
Virtual Geometry?
Virtual Geometry, or the virtual informal Geometry.
How would virtual Geometry be any different than regular Geometry, the question?
An Algebra I, other than Geometry I honors.
Oh, so we don't have anything mine honors?
Correct, at the middle school level.
Okay, got it now. I didn't get that part.
That was the five, I think you said, there's five standard differences?
And what is that?
Can you explain that?
I'm sorry.
What does that mean?
The difference between regular and honors?
That there are, when you look at the course description that we had mentioned about earlier, there are five components that are actually added to the Geometry I honors that made that course specific to the Geometry honors and those benchmarks included, specifically what they are, and have to get Mr. Brady back to talk about this.
No, that's okay. It's just like, those are applied to every one of the lessons, or it's just...
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, those benchmarks are actually the ones that are covered in that particular course description. Okay, science?
Yeah, it makes total sense to, one Algebra I, the other really more to Geometry. This is a totally different way of thinking.
Yeah, there's history, again, because of the, you know, the ninth and the 10th grade FCAP math in the past, but...
Did you try and would you going, going like that?
Well, we had to actually cover all those standards before grade 10 FCAP math was actually done, if you remember, but I, what Mr. Simon was actually saying is that, that's what Brady has told me, is that he's checked with other counterparts throughout the state, and not many have actually shifted to that Algebra I, Algebra II, Geo.
There's so much alike from what is to me, it's like...
But there's also some components, for example, when you're looking at figures, which is one of the big portions of Algebra II, is not only understanding what that figure is and how you can prove certain things, but also the algebra to go along with it. So without that figure and understanding what's congruent to another thing, et cetera, students are also missing out in Algebra II, not having had Geometry. One of the things, for example, on PSAT, if a student doesn't have the Geometry portion before they take the PSAT, and the first time they take it is usually in 10th grade, you know, you're talking a different kind of realm of it, but typically, the sequence has been Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II, and that was being ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, and wanting to make sure that they had enough of those things in order to be able to do well on either PSAT, or then ultimately then on SAT.
We move on to science? Three science courses, as you know, we entered the advanced class last year. Three successful courses in social studies, middle school or higher, and those are World Geography, and that's the civics class at the seventh grade, and then the eighth grade is US History. That is where the change is in regards to 1076, as I've told you in the past, to get ready for this year, students that were going to be taking the civics end of course exam for the first time this year, that's the cohort, that it typically would be 30% of their grade. The 1076 basically says now, that's for all students thereafter. So that group that's in seventh grade right now, taking civics class, will take the civics end of course exam, and it will constitute as 30% of their grade, and then thereafter, our sixth graders, fifth graders will continue that. Okay?
Where was your science again? I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's the one right above it. It's in the green, so three successful courses in science.
And do we offer an advanced science in each of the middle schools?
No. I'm sorry, yes, advanced science.
Okay.
Yes.
That was it.
Okay, the next one is successful courses in English, the English Language Arts. Again, this is required by statute, that middle school promotion has three successful years of courses of English. The Career and Educational Planning course, that you're familiar with, and typically in the past, it's been a self-contained unit. I will tell you that because of class size amendment, this has been more challenging with the offering of career and educational planning, and it is actually embedded into, I believe, the majority of the schools are doing social studies. It is required, it is still required. 1076 made one change in this area, and that is that EPEP, or that E-plan that they actually generated at the middle school, now has to have the new components that Mrs. Nobles is going to share with you about the high school. Reading, again, the intensive reading, and then the new legislation, if middle school, middle grade students score level one or two on FCAP reading, or when the state transitions to Common Core assessments and the English Language Arts assessments, required the following year, the student must be enrolled and complete a remedial course or content area, or content area course, in which that remediation strategies are then incorporated into the course and content. And if you recall, that CAR PD is a lot of the training that we've been actually doing in the past couple of years at our schools. Okay?
Mark, and while we're on ELA, follow that right there before we go.
Yes.
I've spent a lot of energy trying to get buy-in in my home front, having a reading teacher, you know, about trying to explain how the park really was driving, bringing, right now, we have the two separate classes. We have Language Arts and Reading, but as we've kind of heard in various workshops, it's been kind of bringing together yesterday's announcement.
I think, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's more of the Common Core standards and less of the park that we were actually generating towards that.
But I think that in order, but park, yes, I don't disagree with that, and thank you for clarifying, but there's no question that the park was, I think, reflective, or the idea was that it was reflecting off of those standards. Does this change that, yesterday's announcement? I mean, if we're taking those pieces away, and we're needing or wanting our, you know, we have shown that I think the reason we broke it apart is it was successful for our scoring of the FCAP in Citrus County. Even under FCAP, I think 2.0, it was still, I think, performing well. And it's not, and when I say I don't, not really saying, "I want an answer," I really not asking for answer, but more of a, does it have, I mean, does it bring that question back up to say, okay, what, I mean, is it, or is this just another of all of those bag that it opens up?
I personally feel that with the English Language Arts that Karen showed to you today, it is basically that all-encompassing, and I really kind of go back to that idea of basically adjoining the reading and the writing, which has always been kind of separate. Isn't that the right thing to do, for our students at the middle school level? Because we are seeing how all of those kind of intertwined, have those standards that we've looked at. So it's a good question. We'll talk about that in each of our principals' meetings that we have. The next row is the physical education. Nothing really has changed there, and then the assessment, there is changes there, I've actually listed that under the seventh grade, and that the civics end of course exam, and then the plus 30%. This has actually been shared with both principals, with curriculum folks, and then the guidance counselors at September 6th, so that way they have this handy, and then it will be updated each year as requirements change. Okay? I'm sorry, I didn't advance my slide, but there's my slide, I actually gave you a copy of that. So if you're okay with that, we're going to move on to the high school requirements. Is that all right? Mrs. Nobles has done a ruling on this job. Nobles?
I too have a handout. Mine is all color-coded, so that I always make sure that we're on the same page.
Mark, while those are handed out, just theoretically, where we've been having subject-based acceleration in math from elementary, if a fifth grader passed the sixth grade math, and the seventh grade, let's say, and they went eighth, and they, so in essence, by seventh grade, they finished Algebra I. Statutorily, have they met the six, the three middle school maths? Because, I mean, as I'm looking here, it says successfully, courses in mathematics in middle high, middle school or higher, or do you have to actually pass one each year you're in middle school?
I haven't gotten a clarification for that.
Okay.
That's kind of one of those assumptions, and I really don't want to ask, but...
Yeah, and I can understand.
I'm making the assumption, if that child is taking that sixth grade class as a fifth grader, that is a middle school course. Just as if a student was actually taking a middle, a high school course at the middle school, he passes it, gets the end of cour, you know, does the end of course exam, he's gotten that credit. So that's basically, that flexibility is then there.
If the FCAP is not a requirement to pass, correct, the mathematical FCAP?
That's correct, it's courses. So if they take that, and they're coding it as a sixth grade course in the mathematics for grade five, then they've met that middle school requirement.
So that, I mean, that goes back to that other question, though, as if we had someone that we had by eighth grade got into Geometry.
Oh, yes. You're right, I see where you're going with that.
That's really where it was...
They've already met that requirement for middle schools that we would have.
So, just looking for safety net.
Yes.
The handout that I've given you has several things that are the same, little bit different ways to look at it. This top first page, it's in purple. Ms. Hemel can tell you that she's seen this, quite a few versions of it, because as 1076 came out, we were trying to get something kind of quick and dirty, so to speak, to be able to give to the schools, to be able to look at scheduling. As we've had clarification in 1076, it's changed several times along the way. There are still some things that we have on here that is the best information that we have at this time. And then the sheets that follow those are what the schools, and I know that you all had last year with us, that were according to the graduation year, what the graduation requirements were for that individual year, as well as the new information following the scholar diploma and merit diploma that I'll get to in just a moment in the presentation. On the backside of all of these, it is not a mistake, we put a one-page state university system admission requirement and bright futures. We are required now by 1076, anytime that we give out graduation requirements, to make sure that this information is also given to parents. So according to what color you are, which one that you needed it with, so...
Graduation colored.
Yes. It's, you know, I had to pick it according to colors, but that way, as we kind of have walked through it, it's, okay, what color sheet do you have, and let's talk through it, so...
But there's only four. I think last time, what did we have? We had nine or 10, right, Mr. Simon? So we had...
There were some possibilities when the legislative session went in, they were talking about having different diploma designations, having different diplomas actually for each grade level, having different types of diplomas. And one of the revisions of 1076 was to have one standard diploma, and then have designations that went from that, so that there would not be a problem if a student need to move from one area to another. And that was probably one of the best things in all of the many, many changes that went on on 1076, and 7091, as it was at that point in time.
Well, I think at one point, we had a different graduation requirements for every grade level, for every cohort group.
We still do...
Probably not as many, I don't know.
Not quite as many.
Yeah, because it was going to be 30% of the test, and all the tests, and then the next one was going to be another thing, another thing.
So what we're, I'm going to do is let's go through the ones starting with the seniors. You have to realize that this year's seniors are the first group of students that actually are graduating back from when Senate Bill 4 came in to, that was passed in 2010. So this year's seniors are the very first group of students that have to have Geometry as a graduation requirement. One change for the seniors this year that even 1076 changed, and really it was a very minor change, was that they added onto economics the portion that says that they have to have the financial literacy component. And that component really is understanding what taxes are all about, what things such as loans and getting into debt and being able to repay debt, and especially before they get into things such as student loans and all of those type things. This is what we have asked for, for over the years, is what is practical economics that has now been added to the economics portion of it. For the students that are graduating this year, they have two requirements for assessment, and that is that they are under the must-pass of the FCAP reading, and then they are the first group of students who took the EOC, so they are still under the 30%, when they took Algebra, that it counted 30% of their grade. If we look on to juniors, juniors, their basic difference from what the seniors that I just went over is the online course, that that is a requirement for these students to be able to graduate. That, and again, thinking back to Senate Bill 4, they are the first group of students that are required to have Biology. That's not been anything that you've really heard a lot about in Citrus County, because all of our students have been taking Biology, something like 99% of them have taken Biology anyway. So that's not been something that we were really worried about. For the current sophomores, now, there's one thing that I would like to point out, and if you'll notice, under Algebra II, it says required. This was one of the things that as they have defined, it was a glitch that they forgot to take out of the graduation requirements. There are some districts who, and if you talk to anyone in Tallahassee, we've talked to Mary Jane, we've talked to several, and they're going, "We're sure that it will be taken out." And some districts have gone ahead and eliminated it from anything that they are publishing. Well, for those of us who have been in Citrus County, and for those of us who've had legislative promises before, and have been, quite frankly, bitten by it, we decided that it's best to leave it here, because it's easier to tell a student, "Guess what, you don't have to have it," than it is to say suddenly, "Guess what, we have to have it." Okay? So this is still saying that Algebra II is a requirement, and again, everything else follows along with it. This would have been the group of students that would have had to have... This would have been the group of students that would have had to have the geometry and Biology as a must-pass. But last year, when they were freshmen, was the one year that they rolled that back and said now, no, it's only going to be thirty percent from now on. For students who took the actual exam at that point in time, it had no effect on their passing, failing, or anything for geometry or Biology if they took the exam last year. And then for this year's incoming freshmen, this was to be the group of students who had to have chemistry or physics as a graduation requirement, but according to what Senate Bill Four was. However, instead, they moved that, and you'll notice under the science requirement that it says that two equally rigorous science courses. The equally rigorous science courses include things such as physical science, several of the honors courses, earth-space science. Chemistry could be one of the things. So this will be something, as we move forward, that we will be looking to make sure that we have options for students. But physical science, which all of our ninth graders typically take right now, physical science or physical science honors, we have offered earth-space in the past. I don't believe most of the schools are currently offering it, but it's something definitely as we have the ninth graders. Some of the courses that we have been offering, such as environmental science, regular marine biology, those will not count as the equally rigorous. So we're really looking at what are we going to be needing to do in sciences in order to, to meet this portion, and that'll be for the ninth graders.
Who determines right now? Okay, go ahead and... Who's, who's determining the equally rigorous? Is it DOE?
DOE. The list came from DOE, and it was equally rigorous to chemistry or physics. It was specific in that. It had to be to those courses. So that's why some of the upper biology-type courses did not meet some of this. There's no correlation to it.
And what's interesting is, I believe none of our Health Academy courses qualify for equally rigorous.
Not at this point in time, but there is some movement to try to work toward that.
Excellent. What can, well, we'll talk. Need to push that.
Okay. The other things that passed according to, for the freshman group is that of the online courses, driver's ed will no longer count as part of the online courses. Several people have asked us why, and it's, that's a question that we are yet to be able to answer.
Shouldn't that be obvious? What about PE?
How can you...
PE?
Learn how to drive on a computer.
What about PE?
No, that's, that's exactly what they're doing.
Actually, Ms. Deutman, there are two classes for driver's ed.
I know, but I mean...
There's driver's ed, and then there's driver's ed with lab. Driver's ed, it's course, well, but the course number also has to do with actually rules of the road and the things about, you could certainly talk about how to change lanes and how, how to do it appropriately and how much space there is. The, the, with lab is, of course, is the going out and driving portion.
Right. But I would hate for a student not to take the going out and driving portion because they took it online instead. But I have that credential and I don't, I took driver's ed.
And, and that may be the exact reason why. You know, there have been people for a long time that said that people that have a speeding ticket or whatever else and are taking driver's school really should have the own, you know, behind-the-wheel portion, not necessarily, you know, going through the little other piece.
But can you still get PE online?
Yes, you can get PE online.
But it tells you have to go run around and stuff. He assumed that you'd do anything.
And I think the personal fitness, is it health and personal fitness that has been encouraged to take as the online course?
And some of the courses that are, and some of them are better than others for students to take online. Okay? The next portion, as I mentioned, the state university system requirements are on the back, which has to do with the state university admissions, what it takes that are different from the state graduation requirements, and also what it is to be able to get bright futures, and there's three levels of bright futures. That's listed there as well. And what it takes to be able to get into the Florida College System as well. We have a statement down there regarding that.
Go back to your purple side, though, so bottom, you have the assessment.
Yes, ma'am.
You have geometry and a course exam for our juniors and sophomores, and then you have geometry and of course thirty percent.
The requirement, based upon 1076, is that any students coming in this year, their requirements will be that they take and pass Algebra I EOC, plus it will count as thirty percent of their grade. Geometry EOC will count as thirty percent of the student's grade. Biology I EOC will count as thirty percent of the student's grade. And last year, kind of in the last moment thing, they changed where the US History EOC actually started for the freshmen last year. But usually freshmen are not taking that as a freshman. They're usually taking that when they are in their junior year. So all of those now count as thirty percent of their grade.
And so why is geometry and of course exam with no designation for juniors?
That they just have to take it.
Oh, they just won't get it, but they have to take it?
They have to take it. But then, when it becomes for the freshmen, they actually must take it, and it must be thirty percent of their grade.
Okay, and they have to pass it, or just Algebra you have to pass?
The only one that is a must-pass is Algebra.
Unless you want a scholar's designation.
Unless you want, getting to scholars, you're one step ahead of me. Okay, so now let's move on to the scholar designation.
Just one, before we move off that, and we've talked about this as a board, and I know, I think you've got more information than we've had when we started bringing this up, but we also have local graduation requirements for ours, that, that we put out.
And you'll notice that listed with the world geography, it says CC required?
Right.
Okay, so that is one of them. The other portion, we made a decision several years back when the state went to personal fitness and PE, they called it HOPE, and then to integrate health in with it. So really, a portion of that is, is kind of a Citrus County requirement, because that would, HOPE would have been a whole credit, and to get all of the pieces into it is really a credit and a half for Citrus County.
So I guess the question is, is should, you know, should we be reviewing that to see what, and I guess my big, I'm sorry to say, flexibility of what, what we could do to modify it to just continue to make it more flexible, while still maintaining, I think, the expectations that, that the board has had about graduation? But like those pieces, and I think, what was the other one that we talked about? Was it the world?
World geography.
World geography. In some cases, I think, like IB, I think they jump right to world history. You know, does world, or do we accept world history for world geography?
They also do the history of the Americas, which includes a large percentage of world geography.
But so we, we kind of have some of that flexibility, and I'm wondering if there's... Does it warrant that?
AP human geography is what usually the avid students take, which is, is a equally, equal portion of it. One of the things that, the good portion of having students have world geography, if you look over, under the state university admissions, one of the things that can help a student is that it can count as an academic elective, and a lot of the schools do not, or do not have a lot of academic electives. And world geography can actually serve as an academic elective to help students to qualify for state university admissions, as well as to help improve their GPA for bright futures. And I've seen that happen a lot. They go back, they're going, oh, I didn't know world geography would help me so much. That's just a side note.
I just, whatever we can do to make sure we continue the mission of capturing as many graduates and not putting up obstacles, and I, and I don't think it's been, again, an issue that we've had, but rather an issue of what's coming. And so I would just be in favor of, of, you know, if that becomes something we need to, to look at.
And one of the things that we do with world geography, the way that it's written in the student progression plan, is that the student, if they were here in the ninth grade and have, are continuously enrolled while they are in school, that that's who the world geography requirement comes from. We do not make a student who comes in at tenth or eleventh grade go back and take what we consider as the ninth grade course. Okay? As I mentioned, 1076 started out with it looking a lot different. But one of the new things is we have one standard diploma, we have two designations. And the two designations basically are in the com, the columns there beside, or down at the bottom of any of these sheets. And basically, it's to add on to what a student would have to have for a graduation requirement in order to get the scholar designation. I will tell you, there's a lot of questions from the students, especially the students who are currently seniors, about, well, what good is it, and why do I want to do it? And the reason that they're asking those questions is these students are not exempt from having to have the EOC. So if a student who's currently a senior wanting to get the scholar designation this year, they would have to go back and take the Algebra I Biology and US History EOC courses. And the counselors asked me, when we all went to the state university system workshop, to specifically ask the colleges, what do they see as the good behind the scholar designation? And basically, their comment was getting the designation is not going to help a student who's currently a senior. Because what they really want them to do is they see this as an encouragement to that student who is a freshman and puts into their plan that there are higher courses that they can take. And that's what the encouragement is. It's not necessarily the sticker or whatever it turns out to be, because right now, we do not have the decision on what that's going to look like on the actual diploma. But as you can see, it is a more rigorous path with the courses that are listed here as the things that the student would have to have. And then there's also the merit diploma designation, which includes things, the industry certifications. And if they receive an industry certification, then they would have a merit designation on the diploma. A student could receive both of the designations, whatever that may look like. Any questions regarding 1076?
Now, this is a great tool, though. I'm sure teachers are handing it out in the house. It's a nice clean tool for reference, nice for work.
While I'm here, let's talk about dual enrollment for a couple minutes, since that's also in my realm. Senate Bill 1514, with, the board has already discussed several times, which says that the school district is responsible for tuition for the student who attends on the college campus or if it's an online dual enrollment, because they're providing the teacher. I will tell you that currently, we have a hundred and thirty-four students who are taking dual enrollment on the college campus or online. We have an additional twenty-seven students who are taking it on the high school campus, and we do not have to pay for those students. The hundred and thirty-four students are taking eight hundred and eighty-five credit hours of dual enrollment. Yes, that bill will be thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifteen cents. And that is with the reduced price that Ms. Hemel and the superintendents were able to talk with CF. And so that's at the thirty-five ninety-nine rate.
What was, can you just give me that whole number again?
Sure. Thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifteen cents.
And previously, we, we were paying what?
We were going to be paying double that, basically.
But I mean, we've never paid for it.
We've never paid it before. We've never had to pay that at all. Just the books.
Just as FYI, we originally budgeted sixty thousand in line. We reduced it a half because they reduced the tuition a half. So we have essentially exceeded all our expectations for the course.
In first term?
Correct.
Great.
I'll continue on. If you'll notice, my second bullet is we continue to be responsible for the cost of all instructional materials for dual enrollment, whether it's on campus or whether it's at CF. I have been do, doing dual enrollment for four years. My highest bill any month has been thirteen thousand dollars. The total amount that we paid for dual enrollment textbooks last year was around thirty-five thousand for all of the dual enrollment textbooks for the whole year. I just received my August bill in a box. It was twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents. My budget, they upped my budget this year for dual enrollment textbooks. My entire budget was twenty-one thousand and two dollars for the entire year. So right now, I'm seven hundred and forty dollars away from my entire budget.
What's the explanation for that?
I went through the bill. The bill is about that thick. And what we received is a bill that has every student. It has the voucher that we give the student to take to the bookstore, and it has the receipt. There were over five thousand dollars in online access items. And by that, a student would, for example, in math, they have a course, they have, let's say, Mac 1105, which is a common entry-level math course. They take, they have my math lab, their book is digital, it is online for them, and that student then has access to then do their homework, et cetera. The cost of that alone was a hundred and eleven dollars and some change per student. We, we purchased, as I said, over four thou, over four thousand dollars worth of those alone. That's a one-time thing. Years ago, I would have bought a Mac 1105 textbook. It would have probably been able to be used for three years, at least two times. So you're talking the actual cost of a hundred and fifty-dollar book being used six times. Actually, that cost would have been way down. One of the humanities books that I took a look at, it was two hundred and fifty, almost two hundred and fifty dollars per book. And we probably purchased easily, we probably have at least a whole class of, if not a class and a half of those at CF. So, you know, because I started looking, going, there's got to be something wrong there here. There's got to be something wrong here, and, and it wasn't. It was the typical dual enrollment student taking either two to three classes. Their textbooks were anywhere from four hundred to six hundred dollars per student.
So Ms. Nobles, why don't we just say that a student can only have one course a year?
Because the legislature tied our hands and said that we are to allow students to take dual enrollment courses.
Even though we pay for it.
Even though we pay for it, and even though we pay our textbooks. And, and I will say that we have said no to a few things, and that was some of the costs that the college was trying to pass along to us a couple of years ago. We were being told that we had to buy clickers for the students to actually own their own clicker so that they could go and, and take. And my fight with them was, show me how that's in instructional material, and let me see the teacher teach the lesson with... if the teacher teaches the lesson with this instructional material, and then we'll talk. And they backed off with that. And the same thing with some of the other things that have been passed on to the student. And, because we're to buy the instructional materials, which is outlined as either the student's access keys, so to speak, to the digital materials, or an actual textbook.
So what about, and we've talked about this before, we're, I don't believe we're offering as many dual enrollment courses on our campuses as we used to.
The principals, you know, this kind of was sprung on us at the last minute. What the principals have all said that they were going to be doing was trying to seek if they had teachers who were maybe close to being able to teach a class, to really take a look at, is this something, you know, it has always actually helped the schools to be able to send the students to CF, because then you have more sections available to be able to reduce class size and some of those things. Now that the cost is being transferred, it's not that anymore. So now it's going back and taking a look at, who do you have that has 18 graduate hours in one specific area? In other words, it's not just 18 credits in social studies, but it's 18 credits if you're wanting to teach economics or whatever else. So they pretty much have to have a major in that particular area with a, or working toward a master's, or have it in that particular area. Unfortunately, over the years, you know, people had a more generic, if they had their masters had a little bit more generic, they had it, for example, in leadership or something along those ways. Or they had it in curriculum. They didn't specifically have it in a subject area.
And, I mean, I think, though, by doing that, I do think we'll probably serve students better if we can increase those classes on the campus, because theoretically, it's a lot easier for a student to take that course on the campus than have to go to CF's campus. The difference of training and the qualifications of an AP, because of course, the AP, they could conceivably get college credit as well, but from hiring instruction, if I want a teacher to teach an AP course versus a dual enrollment?
They do not specifically have to have 18 credit hours in that particular subject area in order to be able. They have to have been, or we try to make sure that they go through AP training, but a lot of times, people have a lot of knowledge on their own, and the AP training tends to help the teacher to be able to understand what AP is really looking for. You have to kind of weigh the things between dual enrollment and AP. You have to remember that dual enrollment is guaranteed college credit, but it's not necessarily guaranteed to transfer in that subject area, especially for students who go outside of the state of Florida.
If you're going to go to a Florida college or university, there's certainly, I think, an advantage for the dual enrollment as opposed to if you're looking to go to a private or outside.
True. But the thing about it is, even with the state universities, they do not have to take it in that particular area. If you are going to a different institution, again, they can take a look at your English course, and if it's the general ed requirement for English, then they certainly typically will take care of that. But if you're going in the higher, deeper, and those type things, then how that university treats that is totally different.
The other part that I think most parents do not know, and it's critical, is that when you take dual enrollment, your quality points transfer to college. So therefore, if I had all As in my dual enrollment classes, I start with 21 credits of 4.0 GPA, whether it's elective, credited to my elective or my major requirements. So that's important to know. And I would tell you, a young man who shares the same last name as mine says, that would have been a very different influence, because his was 17 credits, I'm sorry, seven classes, 21 credits of AP, no quality points. The other part, again, Mr. Carter reminds us, it's not necessarily that dual enrollment is not accept, I'm sorry, yes, dual enrollment is accepted out of the state of Florida by content area, by credits, by quality points. So while some more selective schools, let's say Middlebury College, Vermont, Princeton may not, many private or public or state universities do accept them.
And I can tell you, as having been a counselor, that I've written media letter to a university trying to give them the requirements, et cetera, for dual enrollment. Some of them took that at face value, some of it counted only as an elective. Anytime that you're going outside of the state, you, it can go either direction. And I was amazed at some places that took it and some places that didn't. So it's, you know, the one thing that we've always told students is, if you know where you're going, then you need to get that checked out according to the other. And the same thing that Mr. Simon was saying is, if a student is not doing as well as they would like in dual enrollment, they also forget that dual enrollment does affect college decisions for the state university system. When I was at the State University System Workshop a couple of weeks ago, the lady from FSU got up and, they do a little two-minute talk at the end, and she was saying that often the student's going, you mean dual enrollment actually counts here, too? And it's going to affect my GPA, and it's going to affect, so, you know, it's, students forget sometimes that it can have the positive, as Mr. Simon mentioned, but if they got that C, or they got some other grade lower than that, that it could certainly affect what they plan on doing beyond that. So there's positives and negatives of, we can mention of dual enrollment, we can mention it of AP, we can mention it of any portion of it. If a student is doing the very best they can, then yes, it's only going to help them. But like I said, those mediocre things can certainly be, have, be a disadvantage to them.
Can I ask you just for your own numbers? There are 134 students at the college campus, 27 taking the college courses, dual enrollment on high school campuses. Looking at who goes where and when, is it just all based on numbers within the school as far as who's offering the dual enrollment on each campus? So that's why.
The ones, the 27, were all at Crystal River High School, because that's the only place that we currently have dual enrollment on the campus, because the other schools, their teachers have retired or something along the way. So that was only at Crystal River High School. And if we offered ENC 1101, 1102 on that campus, and the students had to take it there versus going so that we had to pay for it.
Is, and it's really a question, I guess, between Mr. Mullen and Mr. Blocker, and is there a way that, for some of these retired instructors that maybe are out in the community, that we, if we don't have them on the campuses? And one of the things that it seems like is challenging is if you're a principal, and we only give you so many staff members, and the students and the courses don't come in these neat little packages, it's difficult to say, okay, I need to, I want to fill up a dual enrollment class. Okay, you might be able to do that on one campus for one class with that subject area, but you may not, you know, elsewhere. Is there a way for us to be able to find a way to service maybe that, where maybe a teacher decides that they'd be willing to rotate campuses? And, you know, and teach, you know, they'll teach two classes a day, one in Crystal River, one in La Canto. Or maybe they're just willing to come and teach one class a day. The trouble is, the way we have it structured, it goes against their staffing plan, and then, I mean, if I were a principal, it's challenging to accomplish that.
It's not because of staffing plan that we have this, I mean, we just can't find the teachers to do it, the masters in the subject area, the teachers that retire can't come right back to work.
Because they've got a year at least.
So it's not, I mean, staffing plan is not keeping us.
It's, so, okay, so it's really just more, we just don't have, because I'm thinking, we need to get stopwatch the moment they retire, and say, let's get them back in there.
Laura, and I know I'm kind of hitting you from left field here, but I know we always are offering some sort of program for people that are pursuing their masters in entrepreneurship, and it's not coming from the district, but through our Outlook email, we're always getting that kind of, property of it, so to speak. Can we explore the opportunity to maybe develop a relationship with some facility that offers an 18-credit crash course? I know, because I looked into it, because I was dual enrollment focused until this opportunity came up. I know that there is one program out there, you can jump into it any day of the week, and it does the credits, you could, I had it all mapped out, I was going to have it done starting in August, and we've done, but just so much. So can we explore beefing up dual enrollment certified teachers, so that we can put this $31,000 in moving in a different direction? Maybe that can even be utilized as an incentive to try and chase some staff members to increase their opportunities. So anyway, I'm just tossing it out there. Obviously, I'm not looking for feedback right now.
I'll bring that up.
Thank you.
And the other thing, too, is, part of the additional cost, it sounds like, is our course material, which whether we teach on our course, if I recall, or if we teach, if they take the course at CF or they take it on our schools, we're still having that thing. Is there any way that we can, in our articulation agreement?
That's one of the things that.
Make a deal?
That's one of the things, actually, in our articulation agreement that we spoke about, one of the things that they shared with us, currently, the high school, as an example, through the schoolbook depository, you have the ability to negotiate that contract for five years, and that's one of the things. And then those publishers that submit materials are saying that for five years, those materials will be in the schoolbook depository. That's the way high school works. Unfortunately, there is not that at the college. And what happens is that they rely on the publishers. And when the publishers change editions of the textbook, in other words, they go from the seventh edition to the eighth edition, they can't get the seventh edition anymore, guess what, new book. So therefore, instead of the book being, quote, adopted by the college for three years, or, and that's used to be what theirs were, now they're at the will and mercy of the publishers, is the way that it was explained to us.
Yes, I understand that the digital side, it's made it almost worse, because it allows them to just, even easier.
Access code.
Yeah.
Like, for example, as we've started to look at textbooks at the high school, and they have an access code, then that access code, whatever we get from the publisher is going to be good for five years. As I spoke about, the math class, it's one student, $111. So it is actually, yes, that portion is much worse.
Yeah, I want to address the teacher issue, too. There's no incentive for a teacher to teach dual enrollment anymore, because the college used to give us a bonus for teachers to teach, and they've taken that away. So there's no real incentive for me to want to run and teach dual enrollment, unless you just have the desire to do it.
Yeah, and.
And the teachers who retired, there's a couple that I think, a couple of our principals have talked to about coming back, but they do have to stop.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other lovely information that I have for you is Senate Bill 720. And while you probably haven't heard a lot about Senate Bill 720, it is what is known as the Measures of College and Career Readiness. At the high school, that's what we refer to as the readiness courses. The students would take the PERT, and depending upon whether or not they passed the PERT or SAT or ACT, they would go into a readiness course if they had not. At the college, the new terminology for that used to be remediation. They've now changed that into developmental education. So if you hear developmental education, that is getting the students ready for college classes. Last Tuesday, the State Board of Education put in new cut scores, and that is, they moved the PERT scores, and they moved one portion of the ACT. So the new cut scores, as you'll notice, went up. The reading cut score was 104, it's now 106. Writing went from 99 to 103. Math went from 113 to 114. And the reading ACT went up one point to 19. So this is what the students would have to have in order to, at the high school, no longer be in the readiness courses, or be able to go into actual college coursework at the college. The question that we have, and I cannot answer for you, is how and when does this take effect? We were on a conference call on Monday, and they said, they assume, but they said, you know what assuming does, they assume that it will, the students that are currently in the readiness courses will have to meet the old requirements. However, the day that that was announced, I was also in a meeting with dual enrollment, and they said that if a student walks in brand-new to CF, starting in the spring, then they would have to meet those readiness courses, those new cut scores. So how it's all going to kind of shake down, we're not real sure, but I want you to be aware that there are new cut scores, and you may hear from people who have that. The good thing that they also did at the state board meeting was concordant scores for graduation. We've known the reading FCAT 2.0 cut scores. However, for the very first time, we have a concordant score for Algebra I, and that is a PERT math score of 97 would be the concordant score in order to pass what would be the EOC for graduation. So that's a, that's a first.
That's 114 in order to be considered college-ready?
Yes. And, and the one. You got that.
Good catch, I didn't expect, I missed it.
Basically, with that is saying that the 114 is that you're ready for college math courses. This is just saying that you have passed the Algebra I. They're still expecting you to take Geometry Algebra II, so therefore, that's why they feel that you should be up to the 114 status.
But the math PERT, is Mr. Simon, 25 questions still, is that right?
Still 25 questions.
And is it across the board, all different math curriculum? Or is it focused?
It's more focused to algebra. That's why you do not see an SAT score or an ACT score there, because it is not, those two are not focused solely on algebra, whereas the PERT is.
So is it easier to get a 97 on the PERT or pass the Algebra and the course exam?
We don't know that yet, Ms. Deutchman. You have to realize, this is new as of Monday, so, over Tuesday. So we're actually going back and taking a look at this, and, to see how many of our students that may not have passed the EOC that this would apply to, because we're not there yet.
So they have to be student-tertiarys?
Probably, yes.
And how often can they, can the PERT be retaken?
Basically, within the district, it's 30 days. It's, it's one of those things that we have control over, so we can give it once a month.
So the advantage would be, is we could theoretically remediate when we had a student that started to fall into that issue as a junior, senior. We could remediate tests, remediate tests, until we got them out. Where with the EOC, they're only going to have two windows, or three windows.
Four now?
Four, that's right.
Okay.
That's interesting. Will that change?
I'm sure somebody caught that, we just talked.
Yeah, I'm just going to take this, I'm just going to take this time to acknowledge Mrs. Nobles. She has quite a diversity in the area, and she's really covered that high school. So I thank Gail, because of that added responsibility. So I'm going to bring Mr. Simon up to actually talk about the data for those AP dual enrollment and IB.
Just, if, and if I can, Mr. Carter, did you ever happen to get an answer? Because we were just, before we leave that high school, on last year's Senate Bill 1108 about whether. This one I had written, yeah. But that referred to private remediation, you know, allowability. Did you ever get clarification on that?
No, sir. 110, I know, I'm just kidding. We are basically looking at 1108, we're looking at this, and I've used this term before, and it's a sleeper bill that we've actually have out there, because I thought you might ask me about that when the professional development came up, because of the ESE requirement now for recertification for our teachers. So we're looking at that Monday morning with our team in Ed Services to really kind of go through that. But I've actually looked at that, Mrs. Haynes has kind of shared with me, that ESE-specific, but I will get back to you.
I appreciate it, thank you. And unless, I'm sure the board will be interested, but you can also send me an email to or something. And unless, I'm sure the board will be interested, but you can also send me an email to or something.
No.
Yeah, that's the same thing, yeah.
So before we move into this part two, a reminder, data, data comes in in a schedule based on when tests are administered. And the other part I want to remind you is oftentimes, the agent that administers the test limits our ability to talk about the results. For example, you will not see on today's presentation anything on ACT and SAT because that information is embargoed, unpermitted to be disclosed until September 26th.
Any results?
Correct.
Do you know them?
Yes.
You're like, you're like the, um, Miss America.
Or the mailman.
I never thought of it that way, so, a little bit of control there.
That's, yeah, that's right.
The point, yes, the point we make is that please know that we are not limiting this information to you as based on the availability. And again, each year, Mrs. Himmel asked when I say this, I urge us to look at a calendar of presentation of data that matches when the information's available and it may not happen all at one time to give you a picture. The challenge is when it doesn't happen in a moment and you see it the different month, can we piece it all together to get a big picture?
What is the date in September? You can tell us.
26th.
Yeah, 24th. I was thinking it was like three weeks.
Close.
Did you just get these results recently?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have to keep a secret for how long?
Till the 26th.
When does you get the results?
Friday, last Friday.
You know, stuff that-
That we don't know.
People want to know.
And I am sure we were just waiting on, they didn't threaten to know how we did on ACT, SAT, so-
You can tell certain people that you knew very closely that they had done that.
This, Mr. Block, do you think we can sell that information and cover those costs for dual enrollment? AP, Advanced Placement. And again, I want to bring out a distinctive difference. When students demonstrate proficiency and score that Level 3 or higher on AP tests, the district receives an FTE allocation, allocation of .16 for that. Included in that is a distribution to the teacher. And I bring this up because a teacher receives $50 per student. And the point that was made earlier, Mrs. Himmel stated, dual enrollment, that doesn't exist. And you're going to see some interesting data on dual enrollment and grades. So that's one of the challenges we have, our balancing. We don't pay for, while we purchase textbooks that are AP, they are not nearly the cost. But the return is great and you're going to see some differences in numbers. So what you're looking at on this chart are the participation and performance of students in Advanced Placement classes from 2007 till this past year, 2013. There was definitely an upward trend in tests administered over 1,800 in 2011 and we've kind of tapered off to 1,484. Please remember that it's not that we are losing ground in students choosing rigorous courses. Some of these students who were students in the IB program taking AP tests are no longer taking AP tests. You're going to see the number balanced by the IB tests. You also see the shift back and forth, this jockeying between dual enrollment and AP. And it really is a matter of economics. And I'm going to tell you that there's going to be a significant increase, Mrs. Himmel, in dual enrollment as the cost of college keeps escalating, whether it be a CF college or university system. So parents and students are very wise and Mr. Kennedy referenced a presentation I give to parents that students have the option to get college credit, whether it be Advanced Placement or Dual Enrollment. It's saving thousands of dollars and I'm not talking about one or 2,000. Oftentimes, it's 10, 20, 30, $40,000 for parents in tuition, fees, room, board, expenses, textbooks. So I think we need to start planning more carefully and kind of using trends and statistical data to look at what's the projection for future enrollment in these advanced programs. When it comes to Advanced Placement, you notice on the bottom of this chart, we've listed in a generalized way, the courses that we have offered this past year for which students have demonstrated success, 33% proficient this past year. You can see kind of that pattern over time and always the goal is to improve the proficiency. But you also keep in mind the balance of this. And I remember my conversation with Mrs. Deutschman. So the students who start in freshman year taking Human Geography who have never taken an Advanced Placement test, a course that's giving college credit, and they're 13, 14 years old, first being exposed to this reading level that is collegiate, an exile level, the highest in the 2,300 range, and challenging questions, challenging, and our Human Geography has, I believe, a 14% pass rate. So it is important to know that it is not as easy to make deductions from looking at this chart to say, we're doing well, we're not doing well. There are other factors. And the other part too is how many students enroll? And I did an interesting, and I have my notes here. So I looked to see this year, 33%, that 1,484 represents about a third of the students enrolled in Citrus County High Schools, grades nine through 12. The previous year was 37%. That peak year, 2011, it was about 39% of the student population took AP tests and in 2010, about 35%. So I think that we are doing well and staying steady with that when you look at it in relationship to dual enrollment. What is interesting, last year, we really had a drop in dual enrollment. So if you remember Gail's statistic, I think she said about, if I'm correct, Gail, about 100, when you count the 27 at the high school, somewhere around 151 or 161 students taking, how many?
161.
161 students. Last year, we had 69 students taking 212 courses, about 650 credits. And when you look at those students, and this is, these are not just fall term, it's fall term, spring term, winter. And notice the grade distribution, 55% of them received As, 30%, so 85% of the students had an A or B in the class. So that's pretty, of these 212 classes taken, 11% C and then very small percent with D and F. So that's a distinction there. So when you look at this and you think about qualifying, if a 3 or higher is college credit, in this case, C or higher is college credit. So what we're saying here is 96% of our students who take dual enrollment are getting college credit, and let me jump back, versus on this part, 33% of students getting college credit. So I point this out to you so we can look carefully to know there are differences. There are differences. Gail would, Gail Nobles would say, you know, college is going to tell us, we really look positively at AP because we know there is a standard that's measured on an assessment, a standard assessment that has high quality. So we look at that in a positive way, not that we're ignoring dual enrollment, but it doesn't have the same standards of measurement of learning that Advanced Placement does.
Um, you know, that, the, the presentation you gave, I really wonder if that's something that in the future, if that's given, that we could video and maybe then put on the website or something because it is, it was really valuable. It was a tremendous value.
So Mr. Kennedy again is referring to, when you, when you think about, when you have your own children, Mr. Kennedy, and I'm looking around, you all have had them, when, when, when information and behaviors are transferred into a vehicle that gives you independence, and that vehicle gives you a feeling of rank, class, or privilege, and you have a choice between a Buick or Mercedes. And when you put into those terms, it's interestingly, it's a surprise to see how meaningful that is and powerful that is to cause behaviors to shift between 15 and 18-year-old boys or girls.
And there was a few fathers that said, you know, you'd be just found in that pickup.
I bet so. So I'm moving to IB exams and I would want you to know, and I would be negligent if I did not point out Derek Bittner and the work he does. He, he is an advocate for all children. He is incredible in his work with students who are in Advanced Placement. He is unmatched in his leadership with IB, both at his school level and at a state level where he represents IB in an executive role in the state of Florida and is known throughout the state. He had asked if he could come here and present and, and I said that our fear would be that when he presents, that the IB becomes one more piece of all the information that is worthy of being looked at separately. So Mrs. Himmel has asked that there'll be a later time that we'll look at several factors in terms of their international baccalaureate program, both historical perspective, achievement and the future, as well as dollars earned from the program because I do not have all that information here for you today, so.
Somebody sent me an email, I don't know if this is true, Erin, about the story yesterday about, we were going to talk about international baccalaureate, but it was spelled back natural.
Bachelorate?
I didn't want it to know and we were going to talk about international dating.
And you didn't, and you didn't print it wrong, but somebody looked like underneath-
No, it's hard to spell. I wrote it.
Did you? Oh, oh.
I take credit. It's very hard. The spell checker always wants to make it be something else.
I think the international bachelors might be a little offended by that, but when we look at the international bachelors-
I don't know, I think if I thought there was a bachelorette there, they'd be here.
And then I only got one comment from one person, but that was pretty funny.
This first slide shows you the exams. So a reminder that when students are in the IB program, at the end of their four years, they take seven exams. Those seven exams are part of the IB diploma along with a few other projects. I know Ms. Nobles knows this better than I, since she helped form this framework for achievement. It includes part of a service program, which I think is a hallmark of what's happening at La Canto High School and students contributing to the community in ways that are unmatched. And Mrs. Deutschman and I have experienced those that have caused us to be rather emotional.
And we need to start working on that very, I was thinking about that this morning.
No, you were. The other piece is they do essays and they are required to write ahead of time essays and theory of knowledge assignments that are submitted. But you're looking now at seven sets of tests and if you notice, there were 134 exams administered last year, 223 this year. And notice, again, Mr. Bittner would say, well, well, I want you to tell the board that our goal was 80% and we had just 73% that were moving forward. I tell him that you are remarkable and the teachers and staff and students and parents because it's not just a single one of those that make this matter. And notice it compared to the international. And by the way, these international standards are very selective, selective students, selective by intellectual abilities, selected by economic status that participate in these programs and ours, we do not do zip code limitations. So I think that's important to know. On this chart, if I could start at the bottom first to discuss the number of students and to look at over time. So now we have 99th graders, 84 10th graders, 70 11th graders, and there are 57 12th grade students participating in IB, IB instruction, and also many of them take AP as well. And some even take dual enrollment. So it's an interesting series of options they have. Last year, Mr. Bittner predicted 50% and he achieved 52% awarded IB diplomas. Remember that award of IB diplomas equals also sophomore year ranking credits for college. This year, exceeding his expectations, 60% of the students received IB diploma. And again, of the 50 students, so, and notice the difference in number of students, 33 in the first year, 50 this past year. He gave me actually three pages of notes along with about 37 PowerPoint slides and I, I unfortunately had to chisel them down to things.
He's a hard papa.
He is. And again, I am, I feel blessed to be, to acknowledge myself as a colleague with Derek Bittner and the team of teachers that I think are remarkable, who if you drove by La Canto High School, you would see cars of teachers there on weekends and much of the IB program is focused on writing. And those teachers are reading multiple pages of writing for every child and giving feedback to improve those writing skills. So they should be honored for their commitment. But notice this, $4.5 million in scholarships offered to those 50 students last year.
Is that roughly a third of the entire scholarships earned last year?
I just did, we just did the snapshot today to send to print.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was about a third.
We have about 12 million, 12.2 million, I think, in scholarships earned in Citrus County, so this is what was offered. In that group, there were six National Merit Commended Scholars, two National Merit Finalists, and our one Presidential Scholar Semi-Finalist. So again-
And perfect SAT.
And perfect, several perfect SAT scores. So I, and that really concludes our part of contributions for State of the District Part Two. What is left to share with you after the September 26th date is looking at ACT, SAT. And what I say to you, although I can't tell you the details, it's exciting to see when our students, when we increase the number of students taking these college-ready tests and at the same time, increase our performance above the state and even above national scores, it's pretty exciting. And I think it is a testimony of higher standards for learning, highly effective teachers, high expectations we have, and the support that comes from everybody, from the board who sets and places the pieces, down to the parent who's there helping the child when, or the teacher when the child wants to give up. And questions?
I have one question for you. On the ACT, for instance, the students that had gotten perfect in their category and we had the one who had done it in both categories, did they take those as seniors or did they take them as juniors, should you remember?
I think you're referring to the SATs.
SAT.
That was taken junior year.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do have results this year already. We have one student in our district who's moving forward in the National Merit Qualifying.
From last year?
No, they took the test. Again, how this works, October 16th, all of our juniors will take the National, who are, choose to, may take the National Merit Scholastic Qualifying Test. All sophomores in our district will take the PSAT test that gives us information about whether they're a good match for AP classes or advanced classes. So the juniors' results come forth in September of the year. So we have last year's juniors, this year's seniors' results.
We only have one.
We have one. One National Merit.
Before then, we had had two or three a year, maybe?
We had two last year.
So in your results, how is the SAT given, three, two or three times a year?
The, well, the SAT is given about six times a year, every other month, flipped with the ACT.
Okay, so your results you have right now are no more different than the ones that you're going to get, two, two plus from now, really?
The ACT, SAT results, the ACT, SAT results are aggregated, accumulated and reported at the end of every year in summertime. And then they're provided to us in September and then given with a specific date of when we're allowed to release them. So, so I'm giving you, when you get the ACT and SAT data, you're getting ACT and SAT student achievement scores from 2012 to 13.
So you're not, you're not actually seeing individual student scores right now?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because I'm just wondering very much, perfects coming up.
We do get, and again, the schools receive those and perfect scores, when perfect scores come up, we, we can get notice of, those schools will notify us. So if that's what you're asking, we can keep an eye on it.
Yeah, we know that.
We'll keep an eye out for those. Other question, I don't want to squelch any questions that you may have.
Now, we have one squelch?
Well, it's this part, we've progressed, so the day is almost at three, so there's opportunity for questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayne.
At the last board meeting, I came before you to talk about Penn Foster. Basically, last year, our results were 47 students who took the 94 credits. I talked with Kristen yesterday at Penn Foster of those 13 students still working on their credits. We have students, nine more students who have completed that and have earned a Pennsylvania diploma. Actually, one of the students who withdrew, only was withdrawn, I found out a very short time and is now back to working on their credits. And she said that within the next 30 days- And she said that within the next 30 days, that we should have five more students who received their Pennsylvania diploma. I was able to get from her that over the last four years, including the 16, as I said, this for this past year, but not including the five, because they have not yet received their diploma, we've had 47 Pennsylvania diplomas that have actually been earned for our Penn Foster students.
Of what?
Four years, 47.
Do you know that five that withdrew is now down to four?
Now down to four.
Down to four. And do we know what happened to those four?
One student, it was a family situation that she couldn't continue. And others that moved out of state onto somewhere else, and were going to try to get the diploma from other places.
Okay.
And I was also asked about enrollment in AVID, and what our current numbers were. This shows you that all of our middle schools and high schools do have AVID. I've listed what grade level the students are in. At Inverness Middle, they currently have 94 students. They just have started getting some students into sixth grade, so that number will probably be going up. At Crystal River Middle, you all have visited Frank's program at Crystal River Middle, and Frank draws every student he possibly can in. They have 139. La Canto Middle, they also are working to build up sixth grade. Donita is working very hard there. And Citrus Spring only has seventh and eighth graders currently, because this is their second year, and they are at 91 students. Citrus High has 129. Crystal River High School, their number is 90, and it's down. They have a very small senior class. That senior class, they have been through three different AVID coordinators, and a lot of students have dropped out because of that. But also, several of their students, though, are taking advantage of dual enrollment and some of the other things, and sometimes they just don't have time in the schedule for AVID. But part of it really does seem to be changing three different AVID coordinators while they've been in high school, hasn't, hasn't helped them. And La Canto High School only has nine through 11, because this is their third year in AVID, and they have 127. And actually, I do believe that La Canto has kind of the best stick-to-it rate of any of the high schools so far. And part of that is students that they've chosen, but also the commitment that those teachers have had to AVID, because they have been the same group of teachers throughout.
I was going to ask on the AVID program, for the kids there at the middle school level, for the search principal having the seventh and eighth, eighth grade students, are they automatically enrolled?
No, they are not automatically enrolled at the middle school, they can apply.
Unless they go to high school?
No. When they move to high school, they still apply to come into the high school and AVID. In some cases, I can tell you, especially with Crystal River Middle, there are a lot of those students, actually have even applied straight to IB, and because they feel that they have received a lot of study skills and things like that, and they feel that they're going to be successful in IB. And in fact, Frank often looks to see how many of his students are being accepted straight out into, to IB. Some of the students who needed, that felt like that they needed a lot of support through the middle school, and still are now wanting to take the AB, of the AP, the IB, or some of the other programs, still are in AVID, but that is their choice. It's not automatic.
The concept in some ways is to work, is to kind of work yourself out of AVID. And so if that can be achieved at middle school, then that's great. If that continues to maybe need some of that?
A lot of it depends upon the parent's support at home.
Right.
And I'm not saying anything one way or the other, but sometimes if they have an extremely supportive family, and get the study skills going, et cetera, and the parents then are able to help them get the tutoring and some of the things after school, then that's, that's good for the student and the ability to be there. In some cases, the parents are the ones that are actually pushing them to stay into AVID, because they were going, you know, "I can help you with the work that you're doing at this level, so, you know, I want you to be there before you can get that help."
Coming down the homestretch, we have one more topic, and that is Success Maker. And so I'm going to introduce Mrs. Kathy Pompaselli, and she's going to talk about some updates on Success Maker. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. Good afternoon. It's been very long, so I'll try to be as brief as I can with some information about Success Maker. This year, we've had two major changes. One of them is that as a district, we've gone from a web-based server in the sky to having our server right here in the county, that eliminated some of the problems that we had last year, when we were having internet problems, the students didn't have access to Success Maker on a regular basis. So that has been a huge change for this year, but very beneficial. The second change that we've had is we've brought on a district liaison to work with our schools directly, so we have someone who's on site, Michelle under Perdett, who's in the back of the room, because if you ask a very difficult question in depth, I will not be able to answer it, because I'm not a Success Maker guru. But she's on site, she's done several trainings already this year, and she is the one who did all the uploading, who got us all ready to go. Our middle school started, I believe, the second day of school, and our elementary school were able to start the second, the second week of school. So when we talk about Success Maker, our schools use it in a different, in different ways. Some of them use it for full classes, some of them use it, use them for RTI. And basically, what they do is they look at what their needs are, looks at what their students need, and they use Success Maker to fit the needs of their particular school. So at the elementary level, we have four schools who are using Success Maker for all of their students in grades K through five. We have five schools that are using Success Maker for all of their students in grades three through five, and then also using it as a targeted for RTI students in K through two. And then we have two schools that are using Success Maker for RTI students in all their, for all their grades K through five at the elementary level. At the middle school level, all four of our middle schools are using Success Maker for their levels ones and twos, and I'll tell you, at one of our middle schools, I've been told the story that people in the lab are actually holding a walkie-talkie in their hands, so that if someone is absent in the lab, they can call to a classroom and tell the teacher in the classroom that they can put another student on Success Maker, because it's being so useful for them. Crest and Renaissance are also using Success Maker this year, probably more so than they did last year, and depending on students' needs, they put as many students on it as What we've been able to do this year is in the area of training, we've had 12 school-level trainings to date, and what schools do is they tell us what they want training in. We're able to then customize that training to the school level and give them exactly what they want. We've done 12 of those on-site. Within the next two weeks, we'll probably be doing about 10 more. And then just recently, we did a training for the elementary and elementary assistant principals and middle school assistant principals, being able to show them how they could use that, the reports, and that, those types of things, as they're working with teachers. Reports trainings include things like cumulative performance reports, which are reports that will tell you how different classes are doing, as well as how individual students are doing, student performance reports, or is it difficulty reports, and there's a number of reports that are available. And what I've done is Mr. Hebert's come up to explain to you as a principal how he would have used those reports in his school last year.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. Just looking at this particular report, this is from a middle school, and, you know, kind of looking at it as a principal, picking out some of the key factors that would help you kind of determine how your school is doing. One, it tells you the number of students at this particular middle school, 94 students are actually on the program. It shows the current course level is 5.37. The initial placement level, which is where those students placed into the program, and then it shows you the gain that they have made so far. You can see 0.48 was the gain. The time spent is how much time they spent on it. And then the total sessions, minimum of one assessment, you can see that's 40 is what is listed there. Then you're going to look, and the piece that you need to look at here is, the third column over, it says exercises, percent correct. You really want that number to be at 70%. So they're at 68% as a group, so really, the goal is to kind of get them up to that 70%. So what I would be asking, if I was looking at the group going in there, talking to the lab manager, if the teacher is in there, which students are having trouble? Because as you're walking around, you see the students struggling with a concept or a skill, the goal is for them to pull that student out and have that face-to-face, that one-on-one time. Because as we know, a program isn't going to necessarily increase student achievement, it's that face-to-face time that the teacher and the student has. The nice piece about Success Maker is, it gives those students that chance to work on skills at their level, and then gives the teacher or the lab manager a chance to pull those students and provide that individual support as they need to. And then you can see the rest shows the skills assessed, the skills mastered, skills percent mastered is at 98%, and the students with what we call accept performance is 100%. So it's showing that the students are working and doing what they need to do, but just the one area that we really need to work on is the 68%, we need to get up to about 70.
You said teacher, the lab managers, that it either or?
It depends on how the school functions. Some schools have what they call a lab manager that's in there monitoring the students coming in. Some of the schools, depending on how they structure their day, the teacher would actually bring their entire class in and monitor their class while they're in there. It depends on the, the structure of the, of the school, and how they do that.
So the lab manager should be a teacher's aide?
Could be a teacher's aide, could be a teacher's aide.
And not an instructional?
And they're, yeah, they're not an instructional person. But they, you know, the, the other piece with that, what we've seen with some of our lab managers is, they're very skilled at knowing, okay, this student's having trouble. When the teacher comes to pick up the students, they say, "Listen, they were having trouble with fractions today, can you, you know, you may want to work on that with them and be able to provide that support." This particular slide would be what a teacher would look at, and you can see we blacked out the, the student's name, so this would be a class, a sample of a class. And again, same kind of data is shown, except it's broken down to the individual student level. You look across, say that first stu, first student had a .31 gain so far, you know, in using the program. If you look over there, it's 61% correct. So again, we want that percent correct to be at 70. So if you look down that column, you can see, you've got some of the students at 71, 77, but you've got some other students that are kind of just below that level, so we need to work on building them up. And that variety of ways it can be done, whether it's providing a custom course, they may do through Success Maker, or that one-on-one time that the teacher or the lab manager may have with that particular student. And then again, you can see it shows what skills were assessed, mastered, and the skills percent correct. And this again would be a report that a teacher can look at daily, can look at weekly. As an administrator, you know, I would work closely with my lab manager to make sure that I was looking at those reports weekly, what do we need to do? Do we need to address any areas? And then when I'm speaking with the teachers for their, their meetings, say, their month, their meeting with me on their PDP, we would discuss, how are they doing in Success Maker? What extra support do we need to provide for the individual students?
If I could, I'd like to just share one story from the summertime. When we had our students for third grade not be able to be promoted to fourth grade because of their FCAT score, Shonda evaluated herself to make customized courses for those students. And so the students who went to summer school, we actually made a customized course for those students in the standards that they missed. And each of those students had about 20-minute time on Success Maker during the summertime. And this year, we had 42% of our third graders be able to move on to fourth grade based on an alternative test, SAT 10. That's the highest percent we've had in a number of years, and according to Mr. Simon, that is the second highest percent in the state of, of third graders who went on. It provides, Success Maker did two things, though. Success Maker allowed those students to work on standards that they had missed, but it also freed up the teacher that was responsible for those students to work with students one-on-one in the areas that they were not being able to be helped with through Success Maker. So it really was a very good match, and I think it's something that we can say, made a difference for our students for the sum, for this past summer.
How would the customized courses, the children made, who made and how were they?
Ms. Perdett made them. And what you can do is, just say a child missed a certain number of things on FCAT, you can go in and pull the strands for those particular items, and make a customized course for that student, rather than just go through the regular courses.
Ms. Pompaselli, I just, I could see that look. I, I have been generally a big fan of, of Success Maker, and a supporter of it, and I still largely am. The concern I always have is, you know, that we don't use it to take instructional one-on-one time away from those students. And I know you've given examples of, of that, you know, of trying to better use and manage that. I know our, some of our, our teachers in our MCR, our schools use it differently. Some will put every student on there, others will use it as a remediation or enrichment tool. With the, you know, the two things that I guess that, that struggle now is with Common Core, and I know right now that's kind of that up in the air, where does this fit as we move forward? Because I understood how Success Maker worked when we were in FCAT and FCAT 2.0, and I kind of understand how they say, "Well, we can adapt it for Common Core." But Common Core is about conversation, and it's about, you know, in-depth. Success Maker is, is attacking, it seems like, different issues and skills. So where do we see that fitting in as we fund it, support it, encourage it?
I would say two things, and then I'll get handed off to you. Look, one of these people that were...
That's your question.
One of the, one of the things I, I shared with you is that during that summer school time, rather than students being, doing what I would consider busy work, they were doing something that was very appropriate for them. And it freed up the teacher to be able to work on that student that wasn't getting it. And I know one of the things Mrs. Perdett talked about the other day, when she was talking to APs, that I had not been aware of, is the importance of looking at what Mr. Hebert just said today, looking at that skill level. And I've heard her now say, this, you do not want to use Success Maker for this child for intervention. It's not for everyone, but it serves such a large, large population, and frees up our teachers in other ways, that I see that, I see the work more this year than I ever have.
But then do we need to be running everyone through it?
Most of our, no, let me, let me rephrase that. Some of our schools are not running everyone through it. We have, as I said, we have a number of schools that are doing grades three through five, and they're not putting K through two on it. We have some schools that are using it just for RTI, for students who need that, and schools that are using it as a mix. And I think what they're, I think what schools are doing, like, I know Mr. Reed last year spent a lot of time, his 25th, his lowest 25th percentile, he tracked those students all year long, he was pulling reports all the time. So I think as we...
And that makes a lot of sense. I mean, that's where...
As we are, as we are able to offer more training to, to schools, I think we'll probably even more individualize how we use it within our schools. But I think we're at that place.
That was, that was a good question.
And I just want to share, with Common Core coming, Success Maker is set up right now, since our new generation, and we're looking at those, and still giving the students all of those standards, as well as starting to pull in pieces and components of Common Core. So this is one program where they're getting a little bit of both, to try and help close those gaps, so as the testing continues, they're seeing some of those pieces. There's a built-in resource piece in Success Maker that the teachers can use, and it's actual printout forms that can go home, study guides, different things that can be given to the students to do at home, that correlates to the FCAT, or, I'm sorry, that correlates to Success Maker that they're doing in the classroom. And those particular forms have touched on both the standards and also Common Core coming. So it's kind of getting those students ready, so it's a great tool for that piece.
Are we able to, now that we have it as a district, it's housed at the district, are we able or not able to have it used more widely? Like, for example, you could use it off-campus before, can that still be done?
Not at this time, not, not the way that we have the program. And for that reason, there are some resources that parents can connect to at home, that allows them to do some practices with the program. As far as the actual course that is set for the student, it is done in the classroom on school site. And with that being said, the administration, the teachers are able to track that and make sure that that is that student performing, and being able to see that that is true data.
I'm not sure, though, many kids would want to do it for someone else, because it's not...
Maybe not the student, but maybe someone else in the household helping them out.
Yeah. It just seems like there is an advantage, especially where we have the one-to-one, that in the middle school, for a student to have other opportunities for that, to have that remediation, sitting at home, doing something...
There is a function with Success Maker that the middle schools use, where they actually have live links connected to what they're working on Success Maker. Some of the middle schools have adopted all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade standards, and send those live links home with the students, so they can do continual practice at home on what they've been introduced to in the lab or in the classroom. So that company can... So that component can still be used at home. The actual live piece of the program, no.
Thank you, Shonda.
Thank you. Can I ask Kathy, since you're running the show on this portion of it?
I'm just really truly pleased that my program can find its...
This is it, Kathy. And I'm just trying to understand why we're going this direction. I'm looking at FCAT Explorer. I know this is used as a tool for intervention, it's used as a tool to fill the gaps of learning. With FCAT Explorer, it's a free tool that I, I, as a teacher, have used at the secondary level, high school, nine through 12, not only just for FCAT prep, but also just as a whole filler to get some of those skills mastered. And are we using FCAT Explorer, which is supplied by the state on any level, in a uniformed way, district-wide?
Sorry, I don't know that one.
We are still using FCAT Explorer. With Success Maker, it's completely customized to that student. FCAT Explorer gives a variety overall over FCAT, and what Success Maker allows us to do is totally zone in on the exact strand or benchmark that that student is struggling with, so we can target it specifically and work to build that gap, close that gap for the student.
It will basically offer more...
And can I just, and FCAT Explorer would be something, Mr. Kennedy, that the student could do at home. You know, that would be something where the student, you know, it's, it's assigned, the student can work on that at home. Some of the schools have purchased a program called Study Island. Again, that's a program where we're not necessarily using that in our RTI meetings, we're not looking at that to monitor student progress, but it's some extra support that we say, here, mom and dad, you can do this with them at home, it's gonna give them extra support in reading and math, science, you know, whatever subject they need. But this particular program, I know a lot of our schools are using it to really do that progress monitoring, and if students are doing it at home, as Shonda said, we're, we're not sure, is dad sitting behind saying, well, the answer's C, the answer's D? We're, we know in the classroom, that's not happening, so.
And, and I, and I see that, and I've used all three of those tools. I would say that, I'm not sure that I, I, I still struggle with it, I really do, I really struggle with it, because it is an, it is not an inexpensive program.
No, it's not, no.
And anytime that I feel like we can engage and encourage those students and not, and not take away FaceTime with their teacher, is, so it's to me trying to balance that as we move forward. And, and we're, we're having more and more devices that they are having access to. So that's, that's really where that struggle...
And it's, and you know, it's really defining which, you know, a device is a device, but it's what are you using to help make that happen? You know, I mean, I can have an iPad, but I've learned about Live Binder from Mr. Clotter, and what a great tool I've used this year in my new role, that I may not have used, you know, so it really depends on what the child needs and what the school needs, whether or not Success Maker, down, three years down the road, may not be a program that we move forward on. I, I don't know, you know, to answer that question today, I don't know. And, and I, but that's, you know, but right now, you know, we wanted you to kind of see where we are, what we're doing, and, and what our plans are for this year with the program.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And Success Maker, if you recall, it was actually kind of sporadic at the different schools, and actually, when it does come to the district level, then we have to have a district contact. And that is the, the challenge that we've had, so as we started meeting early on, it was Dr. Geddis, myself, and Kathy Pompaselli, really appreciate Kathy Pompaselli, because she's actually facilitated a lot of that. She actually works on the, each school actually sends in an action plan on their use of, of Success Maker. So we actually, and I think, I don't know if she's covered this, but we get together halfway through the year, and we actually look at the usage reports and then determine whether that needs to be altered.
Hi, you guys. Good morning.
So, is that okay? Right, everything okay?
That is awesome, and I appreciate all of your very hard work. Thank you.
Well, I thank everybody who's had a part of this, I really appreciate that. Thank you. And I will continue to add to that drop box.
Thank you, Mr. Clotter. Let's take a 10-minute break.